The first thing we have tonight, and that's why we have a big crowd, is a public hearing on our Storm King Theater. It's going to be presented by the Storm King Associates. And I'm going to ask them to come up first. And they will kind of go over the scope of work, what they're actually going to do, and then go into how it's going to be used. Because I think it's important for us to know that as we move forward. Then I'll come, after we do that, I'll ask for individuals, it's a public hearing. If you have a comment, you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you, come on up to the podium. And you have, limit your comments to about three minutes. If you have a little bit longer, okay, but we've got quite a few folks. And then we'll move through the public. Then I'm going to have the board, if they have any particular questions, and then our consultants, if they have any comments or questions, et cetera, before we make a decision whether to keep the board, um, the public hearing open or closed for tonight, okay? If I have any questions, any board questions? Okay? If not, I'd ask for the applicant to step up and give us an overview.
Yeah, we've seen it, so I want the public to hear. So the Storm King Theater originally was approved for a 600-seat movie and performing arts theater in 1935. Over the years, it evolved into many different uses. The movie theater remained till 19...
In 1971, I believe.
A little bit later, I think it was.
Or 72, because it became the auction house.
Then it became an auction gallery. When it became an auction gallery, the original building has a sloped concrete floor. They actually did two levels. Coming in from the street, it's relatively flat, ties into the restaurant. And then it drops down three steps for another flat area here. And they held auctions there for a number of years. The building started to fall in somewhat disrepair. The auction gallery sold the property to a person that renovated the restaurant area. Unfortunately, when he renovated the restaurant, which used to be just the storefront, they brought it back to the rear corner of the building, which formerly was the theater stage. So it abbreviated the room quite a bit. So right now, as far as the exterior is concerned, it's going to remain as it is with the exception of an extension of their sidewalk. We're going to run a sidewalk along Churchill Street, along the rear of the building, and into the lower room to have a separate handicap access, because there are two different floors, and the rooms will be used for two different purposes. We're going to relocate the dumpster enclosure out of the corner, put it in an open area here, which eventually will be a building that will have a little bit of storage and enclose the dumpsters altogether. There'll be two handicap parking spaces created off Churchill, so there'll be handicap access, as I said, to the lower room. The exterior itself is going to be basically cosmetic improvements. Some patching, painting, roof, a little nicer marquee facade. But you won't see much change other than the improvements to the exterior. The interior, as I said, over the years it evolved. The restaurant, back in the early 2000s, cut a hole from their bar area into the upper room, used that for different parties, different things. The former theater entrance, for a while, became a candy shop, ice cream stand, most recently a deli. That space will remain in that configuration, with the exception of adding a bathroom, obviously redoing the cosmetics, making the hallway a little bit wider. The deli won't exist, the ice cream won't exist. This will just be a service kitchen for any events that may occur on either floor. The lower room, which we're working on a final design, will have a stage along the north wall, near the bathrooms of the restaurant currently, a separate handicap bathroom, separate exit and entrance from the restaurant, and a movie screen. This will be a fixed stage, about eight feet. The stage will be expandable. We're planning a modular-type stage that depending if you're having a live event, you can bring in the components, make it a little bit larger. The seating, we're working on design layouts now, we haven't finalized it. But the maximum occupancy of this room will be 99 people. Overall, you know, we're going to be updating the mechanicals of the building, make it as energy-efficient as possible, actually scaling back, so we're going to have just the restaurant as a tenant and the theater itself, which Elizabeth is going to oversee that operation. She can go into the details of that in a moment. I didn't mention also that there is a, an apartment. Back in, I believe, 2003, the old theater had an upper lobby, projection room above this. And we converted that to a one-bedroom apartment, and that, that will remain as it is with no change. Landscaping, we're going to have, basically complete the evergreen line along the property line and have some smaller evergreens along the rear. We're going to do some, you know, smaller plants along the sidewalk. We're going to create a screen, fence-like screen, along the sidewalk from the road to the entrance. And we plan on using that for displays of historical movies, things that, you know, events that occurred in the building over the years, just to give people a little bit of the history. And then this area itself, where there's an electric transformer, will pretty much be screened and, you know, out of everybody's sight. And there shouldn't be any, you know, anything large stored there. Everything should be out. So I think that pretty much covers our physical changes. You want to talk about the, how it's going to operate? You want to go through it all, so you understand?
I'd like to go through everything first, and then let the public come on in.
Mr. Yononi, do you want to just explain the change from the last plan to this one?
Yes, I'm sorry, I overlooked that. So we initially planned on a structure that we were going to put in the corner of the property. Based on the coverage and some other issues that exist, we'll have to go to variance to do that. It's kind of complicating our process here. So if we remove that from the plan, we're just going to have the enclosure there in the same location. We're going to separately look at that structure apart from this. If it gets approved, we'll be able to build it over this, which is what was the original intent, and have everything enclosed. But because of the, the variance and the need to move this part of it forward, we thought this was a reasonable path forward to go. And we're basically relocating kind of a mess of, there's like two or three enclosures clustered together here, and just consolidating them into one clean spot out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ray. Elizabeth?
Hi, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Yononi-Brucci. And I am going to talk a little bit about the plans from a business sense of the theater itself. The Storm King Theater is going to operate as a nonprofit. And the purpose of operating as a nonprofit is to give the space back to the community. And our intent is to host as many free community programs as possible in the theater. Having said that, in order to sustain the free programming, we also will be hosting private events. Those private events will be funded into the main fund of the theater, which will be separated into three buckets. First, capital improvement, so long-term investment, upgrades. Equipment failure, theater equipment is very expensive. We need to have a fund for that, things like that. The second bucket is going to be for events itself. So I volunteer today with Cornwall Hudson Special Events. Cornwall Hudson Special Events currently runs a number of free events through the community that many of you are probably familiar with. They are Dominic's Movies on Hudson, The Ball Drop, which has been happening since 2001, and a number of events that occur in between. It's expensive for us to run these events. It's about a $20,000-plus budget a year. And we rely on fundraising for a majority of that. So my hope is that with the business side of the theater, we can create a revenue stream that can support running those community-type events that make it less dependent on fundraising and a lot more dependent on just having a good time with the community. So that is from...
Does that align the profit, nonprofit portion? So they see the two rooms on that, Louis up?
Sure, sure, okay. So when we talk about the space that we're running as a community space, as the community theater, it is the space that we have here with the seats. This gathering hall currently is operated by the restaurant, Storm King Lounge, and it will remain operating by the restaurant, Storm King Lounge. We will look at how we can join up these rooms, or if we ever want to partner or give larger access to space for any types of reasons, stuff like that. But generally, this catering hall does not belong to the public space, to the Storm King Theater space. It belongs to the restaurant. And this belongs to what we're calling the community, to all of you. Is that, answer that? Okay, good. So I just want to highlight a few things. Right now, the Storm King Theater is under the Community Foundation of Orange County, which is a fund of funds for the nonprofit sector. So it's a great place for startups, if you're starting out with a nonprofit space, to go under their umbrella, because they will handle all of the business logistics of what it takes to be a nonprofit. I've received already my first donation from the Town Hall Theater in New York City. They donated their sound system. I needed to provide a kind receipt, so it was really easy to set that up. Longer term, I am looking at a number of individuals who are incredibly talented in the arts community to join the nonprofit as a formal nonprofit under our own 15C. I know I'm missing a number or whatever in there, but 15C. And these individuals are going to be responsible for the vision of the theater in the long term. Now, I've nailed a couple down. I'm not going to publicize any names, but I can assure all of you that they are incredibly impressive people that are beyond capable and beyond my own wildest dreams in terms of individuals. I can imagine wanting to partner and be part of this. And one of those individuals has already helped and has laid out our mission, our use of the space and our pillars, because I talk a lot as you can hear. And I needed somebody to make it digestible for all of you. And if you were here early, I had passed out the little flyer, which has the original architectural drawing of Storm King Theater that was released in the 30s. The, I believe it was the July 26, 1936...
July 3, 1935?
No, addition of the Cornwall local. Sorry, Dad. Dedicated the entire locals, entire locals addition to the opening of the Storm King Theater. And in that, they included, they didn't have any photographs at the time, a drawing of the structure and a detailed description of what it looked like. And unfortunately, I have no images of what it looked like at the time, just a really detailed description. But it's a very interesting article, so that's where that came from. And then in the back of it, it highlights our mission. And the mission is, at Storm King Theater, we are dedicated to being the heart of the Cornwall community, a place where people come together to share meaningful experiences and enrich the cultural fabric of the village. Through film, live performance, and community events, we create space for imagination, connection, and inspiration. And then we have three uses of the spaces that we've highlighted. Film screenings, so we are looking at focusing on classics. And the reason for that is because it's really inexpensive to license the classics, so it makes it a lot easier for us to show them. But also, it's harder to find the classics on streaming platforms. So we want to make sure we have an edge, that we have, we're bringing back a piece of the past and bringing it to the, to the future, to the next generation of theater colors. So it's really important that we stick to our roots and stick to showing those classics. And they're going to, you know, be for children, for seniors, for everybody, for the entire community, for everyone to enjoy. We have a massive film presence that's flourishing in our community. The goal is to look at possibly being a part of a more localized film festival. One of the Hudson Valley Film Festival founders actually lives local and has been in touch with me. And I'm really excited about opening up dialogue with her and seeing what we can do in that space. And we also have timeless magic of cinema for all generations is what we're looking to do from the film perspective. Theater and Performing Arts, my dad highlighted the stage, that it can expand, or it can be really small. We are welcoming local theater groups, artists, musicians, and actors to use the space to bring their creative visions to life, fostering a thriving art scene for the village. Then, of course, we have our community events and private rentals. So our historic venue is the perfect setting for community gatherings, galas, educational talks, fundraisers, or private celebrations, always serving as a central gathering place. And why that, I think that's so special is because I've been doing a lot of research, where I've been hoarding the memories of anyone that has been sharing memories of their time spent at Storm King Theater. And there are hundreds of them I have on a spreadsheet. And I think it's pretty amazing to hear that it's not just like when Distinta was opened when I was a kid and I'd go to a movie and, you know, watch a movie. Like, there was nothing incredible, special about it. The movie was the memory, not the experience of being there. But reading these memories has really opened my eyes to understanding that this wasn't just a cinema house where people went to watch movies. It was an experience, and it was an inspiration for many growing up in Cornwall. Mary Ann from Facebook, who doesn't have a last name, just Mary Ann, she actually is the one that said it was home to our greatest wonderland. And when I read that quote, it just stuck with me, because when I think of Wonderland, I just think of imagination, inspiration, and all the great things that come with a Wonderland. And when I think about the theater and what I want it to be in our community again, is, is a Wonderland. So when we look at what we're doing with the theater, when I look at the team that's coming together to make this happen for everybody, I look at an amazing theater that we're not just reopening as a run-of-the-mill. I'm looking at creating an experience that is going to become a staple in the community again and be home for, be something that's part of the next generation of memories. And I'm really excited about that. And if you can't tell, I think all of you are too, and that's why you're here. And I just want to say thank you for being here and supporting. Or if you have questions and support us, that's okay too. But, you know, we mean well, and that's it, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing to the public. And if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand, state your name and where you live, and then please come to the podium. Anybody want to start? Any?
Are you going to do local plays, or is there going to be auditions?
So I'm, I'm not a creative art director of performing arts. I can try, I mean, I created The Rat King, and I did a pretty good job with that. But if somebody wanted to come in and host a play series for a couple of weeks, and they wanted to run auditions and do something like that, then absolutely be open and available to them and give a word to them to make it happen.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Sir, come on up and state your name and have questions or comments.
Rick Giampolo, 8TEF Place. I just want to say that I fully support this project, and I pray that we can figure out how to get it done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Does anybody have concerns? Anybody else?
Sure. I have prepared, but there's some changes here. But good evening, thanks for your opportunity. My name is Nick Termeere. I'm Termeere and Chapin, right here. And I live directly there. One thing I do want to say is I'm very excited for this project, and I'm excited that something's happening with the theater. So thank you for, for doing that. Okay? But one unintended but very welcome benefit of this project is a chance to address the Japanese knotweed, which is an invasive thing in the backyard here that we have worked really hard to eradicate in our yard.
Yes.
So I want to, you know, make that a priority for you guys while you guys are, you know, excavating. There is a very thorough process that, that does need to happen in order for this to actually be eradicated. So I am hopeful that you guys can do the research and actually like, you know, look at how to, you know, do this properly. And then my second concern here is the exterior lighting, particularly along the rear walkway. So, you know, like I said, I'm right here. My living room looks out to that thing. And I'm, like I said, very grateful to have any change overlooking at kayaks and, you know, gravel lot there. But I would request that you guys follow some, some procedures of, like, no uplighting, you know. And I'm, I'm a design professional myself, so I'm speaking as, as a design professional. So up, no uplighting over four feet tall, no backlighting, fixtures under four feet in height, warm color temperatures under 3,000 Kelvin. These standards are supported by the International Dark Sky Association and the Illuminating Engineering Society. And these are put in place to, to help prevent glare, light spill, and nighttime disruption. And there are other things like no uplights in trees, which can affect, you know, critters and animals that can live in there. And I would hope that these lights can be on motion sensors or timers, so they're not like, you know, going on, you know, at all hours of the evening. Second is landscaping and green screening. We fully support the added planting and greenery. However, it feels like the, this tree line here, I think, can be, you know, if we can limit that to under like six to eight feet. Again, my building is here, my backyard is here.
Yes.
It's very, very small.
Box in.
So I don't want to either box in or get rid of natural light that comes into our space. Like I said, we, we put a lot of time and effort into our yard. I have a one-year-old and a five-year-old, who, you know, we made this all-green space now. And we're trying really hard to, you know, just keep it nice and, and keep it pleasant for, for them. So I ask that, you know, we don't put tall, you know, trees there that block all of our natural light there. Sorry. Third is storm water management. We trust that this is a part of the engineering plan, but we would like to emphasis that, emphasize that the importance of draining water, runoff away from the surrounding homes. Having dealt with environmental concerns like lead and such at our own property, we hope that you guys would take these matters into consideration, even during construction and making things flow toward the street and away from the house. Again, our lot is very small, and we are trying to keep it, you know, important to us. And finally, just access. This is more of a thought-provoking portion of my speech here, but I'm just curious to know why the rear of the building has been, I think that you guys have changed it now, right? The rear of the building is not the priority access, is that?
So because the room, the main theater is two steps down from the upper hall, there really, it's very difficult to get true handicap access here. And there's a good possibility, as Beth said earlier, that this could be used for smaller community events that would only access this room. So we envision this as always kind of being the primary access, with this being the secondary access.
Okay.
But this is truly the handicap accessibility to the theater.
Okay. Yeah, that, one of my concerns is like after a show or a late-night thing of like, if this was a primary thing, and then we're spilling out late night or whatever, it was a, you know, different concern.
Understood.
But, yeah, okay. And then my last question, actually, because this is the first time I'm seeing this drawing. This enclosure, do you have any drawings of this?
I don't, only because we had initially planned on doing a structure that would have covered the enclosure and gave us some storage.
Right.
That's going to require a variance, take some additional time. So this is going to be, we'll have some drawings done, but it's going to be, the building will cover over it when we get the approvals and build that in the future.
Okay. Is there any way that this can move?
It is going forward.
Like closer to the street?
Well, it's going to go probably right about here, because that's where it would fall in the building. So it would be about 15 feet further forward than it is currently shown. So it'll be probably up here somewhere. So quite a bit more forward than it is.
Okay.
And then the building will just go around it when it's done.
Yeah, I remember the original drawing was right around here.
Yeah, but that's where it's going to end up, in that footprint, where the building would go in the future.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. And then my last question is this compacted stone surface. Do you know, do you have a detail of what that is?
It's, it's pretty much going to be gravel, you know? Mainly for drainage, for the reasons you just said. There's no need to pave it, you know, it's not going to be a parking lot. The, the handicap spaces, there actually is pavement under there, but they're, they're going to be paved. We're probably going to end up with less concrete when we're done than we have now, because of all those pads that are everywhere in the yard.
Yeah. Well, my concern with the compacted, the gravel is that if we don't eradicate the knotweed that's back there, and we're just like putting more gravel over it, it's not actually like solving the problem.
What we'll do, when we excavate, like, the landscape area is going to be excavated and topsoiled. We'll put fabric down. That's used, the filter fabric usually separates any remaining seeds, weeds, from growing through. And then you place the material and compact it.
From my research of it, you're supposed to cover it for three years in plastic. And that truly actually kills the rhizome that is the, the plant itself.
Gotcha.
It's a, it grows on, it doesn't, it's not just a weed that comes up. It grows underground, and it will continue growing underground.
Yeah.
So, and that, that's what I mean by like doing some research on how this is actually eradicated, is like, I'm right here, I'm your neighbor. I'm, I, I want to be neighborly, I want to like, I'm very excited. But I just, like, it's a real, real pain. It, it, it kills all of our plants that we plant in. It suffocates them, it's a, it's a invasive species. It takes up all the soil, and it just, it's, it's not, it's not fun to deal with. So that is my, that is my, a big concern of mine and my wife, so.
Understood.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I took a lot of your time. I appreciate you guys, thank you very much, and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Brendan Coyne, 13 Pollock Court, former mayor. And during my time, I tried to get the theater open. I, I met with Ray a couple of times, but it just didn't happen. I'm so happy that it's happening. It's going to be a great asset to the community. And I know from the efforts that are made in the theater, particularly in the schools, that it's going to be very much welcomed. So congratulations on your efforts.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you.
Other comments? Concerned? Mike?
Good evening, Mike Trainer, 1 Elsie Circle. Back in 2016, when we started the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee, part of that came out of visiting other communities and, and going to Beacon, Cold Spring to see movies and whatnot. And we always envisioned having an opportunity to do that here. And the Yononis, they're, it's a labor of love for them for this, this theater. I have every trust in both Elizabeth and Ray, they'll do it the right way. And we just fully support it. Thank you.
Other comments? Hi, Drew.
Drew Elliott, I live at Sixengen Lane. I'm so excited about this. I think more than anything, and I think that Ray and Elizabeth are doing a tremendous job. I think, why should we have to drive 30, 45 minutes to go see a movie? I mean, this is something that kids and... I mean, this is something that kids and people and communities have to have. Movies are part of the American dream and I think, I'm so excited to see this. Instead of an empty building, a place where people can have new imaginations, build their imaginations, see things that they've never seen and take them to worlds that they've never been to. And so, I think it's, it's such a tremendous thing to have the lights turned back on in the theater. And so, um, I celebrate them both for, for taking this adventure.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, comments?
My name is Mary Donahue and I think another thing that should be added here is not only is we created, created a space for imagination, connection and inspiration, but also a vision far, far into the, into the future. Mainly because I was on the original bandstand committee and that we never thought was gonna take off and it has. And also the garden community, which is down at the farm, that has developed more in three years than we thought. So, this has another added part to the community of which will grow in leaps and bounds very quickly. And we welcome you.
Get him in the background.
Yes.
Hi.
Good evening. Joseph Gross, former mayor, longtime planning board member, who wrestled with in particular parking in the village. I mentioned to Elizabeth that, uh, back in, during my tenure as mayor, that we commissioned the Orange County Planning Department to come in and evaluate parking, which was an issue back then. There was a plan to enlarge and improve the existing lot that's there, which, as I understand, was originally part of the movie theater. The public was adamantly against enlarging the lot, putting more pavement down. The county found that there's more than adequate parking around the village, on the street, and it also encourages people to walk. People come here to walk. People will come here for a theater and wander around. It'll be good for the rest of the business district. I worked with Ray Yononi in particular and, uh, they, he did a great job with the building. He preserved the architecture and I think he and Elizabeth are a welcome bunch to come into the village. I'm here to support them and I wish them the best and I thank you for considering them.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, I'd, I'd like to turn to the board. Any, any comments or thoughts or questions from the board? Not at this time. A look at our consultants. McKay?
Mr. Chairman, I know that you had had some questions that I don't know if were addressed yet tonight. And that was about the number of events, type of events, timing. Is that, did I understand your questions right?
I'd like to get a better feel for, um, you, you talked about a lot of great things that are gonna happen. But, um, parking is a little bit of an issue. Um, some people will be more concerned than others. Uh, I'd like to know, what's the frequency? What do you see is, this is, is this gonna be something that's, um, done nightly? Or is this gonna be something that's weekly? Or it's, what do you think is a monthly usage, uh, that will?
I think the upper room.
Just a, just a thought.
The upper room is gonna be a weekly, small add-on for the restaurant bar. Could be piano, could be musician, could be comedy, Friday or Saturday. Um, that, that will probably be a weekly event. The lower room, um, depending on its use, like, uh, Elizabeth had said about, you know, different community groups that may have a need for the space. I think a lot of that would be daytime use, smaller events, so there should be some balance in the times. But I can't imagine like movie or live performances would exceed twice a month. Would you agree with that?
Just want the community to get a feel for, you know, the.
Especially at the beginning. I mean, we need to have a startup phase and, you know, they'll, we have, we'll be picking up pace once we determine the demand, um, our ability to fundraise and support. Right now, uh, how many movies do we have scheduled for this year?
We have five movies scheduled.
We have five movies scheduled for the whole year with Cornwall and the Special Events. Again, it's $500 a licensing for, per movie. Budget allows, maybe now that we have it in, inside covered roof space, maybe we can amplify that to 12 movies from here. One movie a month, you know?
I can say that I really like the fact that we won't have to set up the screen.
You don't have that large outside screen?
Takes the better part of a day. And it would be nice to be able to go and to walk down to the Storm King Theater.
Sure.
With, with a Blu-ray or a disc or, or a thumb drive and be able to play it in. I mean, you still need volunteers.
Sure.
You know, because people are gonna have to come out and, uh, and, and support those. But once a month, twice a month.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable to me and, uh, and, and practical. Like, this is not, I, I think, if, if you could, like, this is not, uh, like the Beacon Movie Theater, you know?
That's what I, yeah.
You know, which, which.
It's, it's not like a local movie theater that shows something every night.
Yeah, they're showing two or three shows. You know, but they're showing three shows a day in three different theaters within that space and this, this model is not that.
That's not the model. Okay, thank you.
So, there would be no more outdoor movies?
Oh, I didn't say that. So, uh, you know, I think, I think, you know, there are some really nice nights, you know? Some really good memories of, of doing that and like, you know, when we showed, uh, E.T. like down at the water front.
On the waterfront.
And things like that, you know, although I'd like to do Jaws again. Uh, since we did it like the first year, I think second year maybe, Michael, correct me. Uh, this time I'd like to turn it, you know, so that it's facing the water.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. McKay? Before we take a look at?
I had one more question.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Yononi, you indicated that the, um, the dumpster enclosure was gonna move a little bit from the plan and we weren't able to see.
It, it's gonna fall within the footprint of the garage or storage building, which... So, basically, we would hope to be able to build this eventually. So, we'd probably build this portion, you know, of the building for the forward portion where the dumpsters are going to go. And then the building would go, we'd build over it when we're done. It would be enclosed inside it.
Are there any variances required? You know, I'm gonna look at Mr. Cormona. If that's, um, changed to what you propose now versus that shed, uh, are there any variances required for this particular?
My understanding, there are not, but Dominic could better speak to it. And we are relocating the dumpster, which currently is almost like a conglomeration of different things that are going on in this area.
Right.
It's all gonna be cleared out and it'd just be consolidated in one spot.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that is my understanding as well. I mean, the, the lot coverage issue was, was something that was raised. And, uh, you know, this, as, uh, as Ray had mentioned, you know, his relocation of an existing dumpster to that area. And, uh, also the removal of the concrete pads that are out there as part of this is gonna bring that lot coverage down from where it is right now. Um, I do wanna say and point out though that, uh, as Ray had mentioned, like this, um, is, is better for the project at this point because they're about to sign their, their grant agreement with New York State, so they need to move over. And, uh, that eliminates the need to go get the variance. But if they decide, and it sounds like they want to do it, and, and it would be better to have that storage structure there in the future, they will have to come back. And they'll have to come back to this board and they're gonna, and they're gonna, and unless the code is changed between now and then, they're gonna need, uh, variances as well.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if, but I, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just, just for the record, Manny, you did say when you had looked at this revised plan, that there's still no variances, there are no variances needed based on the revised plan that they brought tonight, correct?
That is correct. The, uh, the proposal tonight with the dumpster enclosure does not require any variance.
Okay, thanks Manny.
So, I'm not sure if Planning Board refers this to zoning or Manny does in the future. But if the board does, if you consider that referral separate and apart from what we're doing now, you wanna keep it completely, you know, this way, start that process in a month or so.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, the board should be looking at this plan now that is being presented, as it's being presented now. If it changes in the future, then I will be referring you to zoning if needed.
Okay, thank you. Jason, any comments?
No, I'll just mention that we did, uh, mention previously the, the things that were mentioned tonight, the lighting and the stormwater.
Yes.
Those things between Manny's office and our office will be addressed as part of this application.
They're part of the engineer's notes to the applicant.
Do you want the notes on the plan?
Okay.
Well, I think they were, they're gonna supply some cut sheets for the fixtures and some details in your Manny's office.
And we're probably, we're probably eliminating 70% of not building a garage, so it's gonna be just that much. And it'll all be dark sky combined.
Yes, yes. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I think what I'd like to do is, is, uh, does anybody have anything else they want to ask in the public hearing? Cause I'd like to do some more work on this project. Propose, we close the public hearing? We keep it open? I guess I'm asking the board? We wanna close the public hearing for right now?
Well, if the board, I would leave the public hearing open until the board deliberates.
Deliberate?
So, it's part of the record.
Is that better to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna, if you just wanna ask one last time if there's anyone from the public that'd like to speak and then close it to public participation, you can do that.
Okay. What I wanna make sure is that, you know, that the elephant in the room for some folks is parking. And, um, I don't know if it's an issue with anybody here, but I wanna make sure, you know, we're gonna have to make a decision. And then the second one was on the variance. It seems like we're okay there. So, I want to make sure that if there was anybody that had a concern on parking, they spoke up. If they don't, what I want to do is, is let the board, for, first of all, Mr. McKay, talk about the parking issue a little bit and what our options are. And then the board will take a vote on. We have the authority based on a code to waiver the parking. Okay, so that's what we're gonna be talking about. All right, so Mr. McKay?
Sure, so, I have provided the board with a, with a draft resolution, uh, subject to some edits and conditions that may be required tonight. Uh, you're right, Mr. Chairman, there were two issues. First issue is whether there would be any variances and the need to refer this, refer this to the ZBA. Uh, those have been eliminated by the revised plan that they submitted tonight. The second issue, as you said, well, the second main issue would be the, would be the parking. Uh, and as Dominic pointed out, and I think as we all acknowledge, you know, there, there, there may be the need to look at some code revisions, you know, in, in the future with respect to parking. But, what came out of this process is that we have a formal opinion of our code enforcement officer that at least with respect to this application, the waiver provisions in our code applies to this application. So, the applicant does not need to go to the ZBA for any kind of waiver or variance, excuse me, with respect to parking. That issue remains with you. So, now the question for this board is whether or not to grant any kind of a waiver. Now, other sections of the code, um, as Manny has detailed in his comments, break out a specific number of parking spaces for each of the various uses for the building. There are certain parking requirements for the restaurant, for the theater or the gathering space and for the apartments. So, I detailed in the resolution that the total that the code enforcement officer came up with was 78. We also had a discussion when we were here the last time, uh, based on, on minutes of prior planning board approvals that were submitted, where parking has been discussed each time the applicant comes in and each time the applicant was granted their approvals. There's no specific, or there's no specification of what the parking requirements were exactly previously. In, 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 in the end, they've gotten all their approvals. So, one way to look at this is, okay, what does this change mean with respect to parking? And this board can consider, uh, the times, the, the number of events that are gonna be held and make its determination as to whether or not it's appropriate. And by the way, the code doesn't give any specific factors, uh, whether it's appropriate in this particular instance to grant the parking waiver. So, again, I prepared the resolution for you, it kind of details the history. I went through the various materials that the applicant provided. I listed specifically the, uh, prior planning board minutes and approvals that we had received. And I noted that in each one of those, parking was at least discussed, although the minutes from 20 and 40 and more years ago are simply not specific. They don't talk about parking in any specific way, but again, the applicant got their, their approvals. Um, the other thing that this draft resolution requires, it is a conditional approval. It's just drafted that way, it's not an indication that the board should grant it or deny it, it's just a draft. I have provided at the end certain conditions. One, which was anticipated, when we got here tonight, we were provided with a revised plan. So, if the board, uh, the first step would be for the board to make a determination with respect to the parking. If the board is intending to grant the parking waiver, then it can go on and make a final determination with respect to the application itself. No other boards are required, no one, I mean, unless the board has specific questions for me or for Jason or for the applicant, no, no additional boards need to weigh in, it's completely with this board.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Um, so what I'd like to have, does the board members, do you have any particular questions or anything? Well, I'd like to cover the parking issue first and then we'll go towards the application overall as far as completeness. Any comments, thoughts on parking? Any concerns on parking?
I'm a city kid. I've grown up with, uh, parking as the ruling factor in my life. I, I don't see that as a determinant in this application.
Okay.
Agreed, agreed.
Agree.
I'm fine with it.
I mean, I'll look at this, is, there's so many positive things. We, we will deal with some of the parking issues, um, as a community, so we could have a benefit. And so, I'd like to take, um, a vote and a motion to, um, have the waiver to allow parking for this particular project and application. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A, a motion to, I?
Okay. Um, I'll make the motion.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're gonna go with a waiver to parking. So, when, uh, hopefully we encourage walking and other great things, et cetera. But there's gonna be some inconvenience once in a while. But this is a wonderful addition to our community. The second thing we need to do is, we talked about and Joe laid out, is we now have no variance requirements. The applicant, uh, Ray, you have eliminated that particular structure. So, we can, um, approve the resolution of the planning board that, uh, Mr. McKay has put together as far as completing the application. Is that correct, Mr. McKay?
Say that again?
I know, you were reading.
I was, I was.
So, now, we wanna come, say the application, uh, is complete. And so, we're gonna support the resolution.
Yes, and just to be clear, the application was complete certainly for purposes to hold a public hearing.
Yes.
So, yes, the application has been complete.
It's completed and we approved the application, given the new, the new drawing.
Are you asking me or telling, are you asking me whether you want to approve?
I'm saying that's our motion.
Oh, so you're making a motion to, to approve?
Right.
To grant the conditional site plan approval?
Just wanted to make sure before I made the motion that, that's correct.
You, you can do that. And maybe if that's going to be the motion, maybe you should just speak about the conditions for a minute, for a minute. So the last, the last items I have on the, the draft resolution would, would be, one, the submission of the amended site plan that we received tonight for our engineer's review. They've, they've done that. Jason will take a look at it and let us know if there's anything that needs to be added or modified. So if the board wishes to approve it, one, one contingency was, would be to provide, formally provide the amended site plan. We do know that there's going to be a sidewalk installed. And I didn't really get a chance to look at the plan that was submitted tonight. But if the sidewalks, we have to look at the survey. If the sidewalk's on private property, that, that's fine. We believe the, the sidewalk may actually be in the public right of way. So if so, of course, you're going to need, either way, you're going to need a permit from the, the Public Works Supervisor with, you know, standard application or insurance for workers' comp, et cetera. And then to dedicate the sidewalk to the village. So that would be second condition. That's the second and the third condition. And then the gentleman did mention lighting. And he used the term cut sheets, and one additional cut sheet submitted by the applicant to demonstrate...
That they're dark sky compliant.
Dark sky compliant? Okay.
Which, which I would suggest would be covered by number one, because we do have a submitted final plan set that has to be reviewed by the attorney and the engineer.
And then... So that would cover the gentleman's comments about lighting. He also mentioned limiting the tree line and the height of the trees. Runoff would be covered. And I don't know...
Adjust the landscaping in that location in our final plan set.
Okay, and that'll be on the final plan set?
Correct.
Okay, and you're going to kill the Japanese knotweed too? You're going to take care of that?
Okay.
We'll, we'll actually work with our neighbor and...
Okay, that's going to be a note, that's going to be a note on the plan. So with those, with those conditions, which I will write up...
So you're going to, you're going to adjust this?
Sure, and...
The bottom line is, is with, given those, um, we will take a motion to approve the application submitted by the Storm King Associates.
With those conditions?
With those conditions.
Mr. Chairman?
Anything else?
Yeah, you have some, oh...
No, it's okay, I, I was just wondering if you would close the public hearing. If you did, I...
We, we have to do that also, yeah.
Joe, you have text here about, um, the number of shows, times, et cetera?
It's a placeholder, and that goes to the chairman's question. So what I would do is, I'll try to finalize this, add in the conditions we've discussed. And I made some notes that they expect one to two theater performances per month. And with the use of the smaller space, on a weekly basis. I took, I made some of those notes. So I'll, what I'll do is, you know, I'll include that text in a revised final resolution for you, for your review.
And one of the reasons why we did that, and we thought it was reasonable, we're, we're approving this based on the proposal. And the proposal includes the frequency and usage, et cetera. Because somebody else might buy this down the road and want to put up something like that's in, you know, Poughkeepsie and have movies every night. I don't think that's what the community wants. So we wanted to make sure it had, uh, some restrictions on, uh, the usage. That was really why we did it. Manny?
I do understand that you waived the parking. I would need for the record to state the reason why, specifically the reason why you're waiving the parking, just for the record.
That's, that's a great point. The, the bottom line here in our community, we don't have any more space. We have a central business district. We want it to be vibrant, we want people to come down there. But there is, there's no more room to, to build space here. So if we want to encourage people to come in and have businesses and do things, we can't continue to say you need to build parking or make parking for it. So we felt as, as a team that we needed to take a look at this practically and say, if the community wants this, which it sounds like we do, then we need to take a look at a waiver. And that's really, Manny, thank you, that's why we took a look at it this way. Anything else I...
Well, I, I think I can respond to, to Manny. So one of the, in, in the draft resolution that I gave to you, that I made this statement. One, there's, that the applicant has made certain representations with respect to the amount of the use and the times of the use. That's one portion of it. And then, whereas the planning board has considered that the structure, which predates the adoption of the present parking requirements, encompasses a significant portion of the existing lot, such that creation of more than the two proposed park, off-street parking spaces is not feasible.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Manny, I do, I have a copy of the resolution for you, I didn't give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Before we, go ahead.
And just when, uh, we need, if you do decide to approve the site plan, just for the records or give the date or the revised date of the site plan?
On this, that one we just received?
Yes, sir, whatever the date is.
I would update it, I would update it with the comments from the engineer.
Okay, so we're going to...
Some of the details they requested and have prepared, uh, a plan for...
So we could do it conditionally based on the revised plan being submitted?
Yes, with the...
Okay.
And the comments of, uh, attorney.
Attorney will, will revise this, fit that. Because we got to take off that there's a, the part in yellow in the front which says shed, it's got to come off. Now, as another attorney rightfully reminded me, before we take a vote, I want to close the public hearing.
We have another moment.
Oh, we have another comment?
We have two, we have also, Mrs. Donnie.
Can, can you ever use the parking that's behind the Board of A building?
We, we never got, we never got to that issue, because the board has waived...
That did come up.
I, I am sure, I am sure that some residents will...
You have envisioned that people could park at the town hall and use the pub, the, the bus that they have in the community to bring them down?
Yes.
Don't, don't lose vision on that one.
No, no, we could, we could do that.
There's a way to do it.
I do, yes.
Uh, this gentleman back here actually brought it to my attention, but, uh, is the, uh, are the kayaks actually moved?
They have to.
Okay.
Yeah, once we start construction...
I just want to make sure, because I feel like that's, that is a culprit of the knotweed, which they brought up from the river. So I want to make sure that it's like, you know, we talked about the knotweed, it's, uh...
I wrote, yeah. I, I wrote down the knotweed, we got it.
All right. Anybody else before I make a motion to close the public hearing? My motion to, to close the public hearing?
I shall move.
I second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, last, the last issue on this particular project is to do a motion to approve the application
with the conditions.
With the condition that we're going to get the revised drawings.
And I'll, and I'll prepare a final resolution incorporating the conditions for your review and signature.
Okay. So I make that motion to approve the application with the condition of the revised drawings coming?
I'll, I'll move that again.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your time here. I'm looking forward to being in the theater, um, sometime in the future. Thank you very much, thanks for your presentation. All right, thank you, Joe. All right. Give it about a minute to transition, and then we'll go to our next applicant.
I mean, my neighbor will be... I appreciate it.
Which will be Shore Road. And it's really all about... I don't know if you have any, a lot of, I want to give you an opportunity to ask more questions. The decision tonight is...
Simple enough.
Or not. Hey, Brendan, how you doing? It's good to see you, thanks for your comments. It is.
Excellent.
Gary, nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll never give up.
No, 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 no. Try and chill.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, we need to start in about a minute, we need to start the next project. We've been moving.
Buy me lunch? Oh, gosh.
All right.
Twenty-eight.
On this one, too.
I know. At this point, what's the matter right now?
I know, this is, uh, this is a shock.
I'm not mad, I'm just, I'm grateful that things are happening and like, I just want to make sure that we're all... To help each other out.
We'd like to clear the room.
I appreciate you guys.
Can we take the discussions outside?
Can we move? Can we move these talks outside? Please.
Could we take the discussion outside, please?
Please.
We really, we owe it to the next applicant to continue to move forward.
Please, please.
Okay.
Hey.
Anything on this? This is the lead agency?
This is just the circle of the lead agency. Thank you.
Is that, um, will, will that work?
We're going to steal vicious stuff.
It's not the public, we're not at a public hearing yet, so...
Anything else? I think, I think we'll do it, thanks.
Yeah, I got it.
I think I have one question.
You've got a question? I'm, I'm going to open it up to the board. Okay, good evening.
Hi, David. Hello, board members, it's good to be back, good to see Manny. I, I didn't bring one with me.
Sure.
Sure, sure. Joe?
How are you? Most of my glasses I got.
I will be sure to add an easel to our, uh, our...
Your packing list?
Package, yeah, we, we got the pointer, you know, now, so...
It's all right. Jason, thank you very much. Okay. The next topic we have is, is the Shore Road project, the development there, the seventeen dwellings. And David, you're up.
Yes, well, we're happy to be back, hoping to add a few families to your community to enjoy that, uh, great project, that Storm King Theater and all the events that'll be there. At our last meeting, uh, the board had requested four items before they would consider declaring themselves intent to be lead agency to distribute the plans. So the four items was, uh, an interpretation regarding the amount of lots that would be allowed per the zoning code and, and Manny rendered his determination on that. And so we look forward to pursuing that with the zoning board. The second item was to add an additional cross-section through the site towards the upper level or of the area, from Idlewild down to Mudna Creek and Shore Road, to show the relationship between the existing homes up here and the new homes that we would, are proposing. So we did a cross-section here, it was, look, it's entitled Section D. You have on your plan on C eight, and it shows the existing homes here and the new homes that are being proposed. So the existing homes are around elevation one hundred and forty, uh, at your sightline. The tops of the roofs of the new homes would be at elevation ninety. So that's a fifty-foot difference, uh, between the existing homes and where our homes would be located. As we show, it would not indeed any, uh, have any visual impact on the land below or at, on the river or the creek. And it maintains and preserves the view shed of that area. The third was to complete the full EAF, uh, which we did, and, um, I haven't received any comments on that. So for the purpose of this presentation, we're going to assume that that's complete for, to satisfy seeker. And the last item was, uh, that we, the board didn't request at this time, but we did include an arborist report, uh, prepared by Gary Roach on the, uh, trees and vegetation that are found on the site. So the Japanese knot wood is popular, or unpopular as, uh, as goes, and that was found on the site. So that's something that we'll deal with. But he did find and locate and identify some trees that were of value, uh, that we would look forward to preserving. And he'll give a, a more detailed report as we go on. But just some of the things that were found, the Norway maples, the black cherry, black locusts were found on the site that, uh, we would try to preserve during the construction and, uh, provide details on our site plans to maintain those trees. But as was mentioned earlier, the knot wood, Japanese, uh, Japanese knot wood and the bittersweet, uh, trees or vegetation are those that would not be favorable to the site, so it's something that we would address. So as you know, our, our intent, our hope is, uh, this satisfies the requirements to now so that we can, or you could declare yourselves the intent to be lead agency, distribute the, uh, plans accordingly to get our outside agencies and, uh, refer us to the zoning board, because there are a few variances that we would need to consider with them. And just as a reminder, it was four lots we need to, uh, have the front yard or lot with addressed, and we would like to do so, and then the determination on the final amount of lots. Uh, we have not forgotten the comments from the water department, so we're hoping to work concurrently with everyone, uh, with the two thirty-nine referrals, with, um, the water department, and then with the ZBA, so that we can keep the process going.
Thank you, thanks for having me, David.
Thank you.
I turn to the board for questions. Kristen, you said you had some questions?
Yeah, I, I had a question on the environmental assessment form. There's a question G about hazardous wastes on the property, and it's checked yes, but there's no explanation underneath that.
I think that was an automatic fill. So we will, we'll have to, uh, you know, further investigate that with the, with the outside agencies that, uh, would have included that.
Just a couple of things.
Sure.
From my point of view, one, I'd like to have at the end of my thoughts. Jason mentioned a few things about your, um, analysis. As far as this here, I, I'm, I'm, I like this, I'm glad, and thank you very much. But the view district analysis, there's some other things that we might want to take a look at just to make sure for the folks living on the hill, uh, that Jason mentioned to me. So I'll, I'll take that. The, you've mentioned something that I, I really like is, I liked Gary's report, Gary Roach, uh, his tree report. That was a good analysis, but I'm, I'm hoping that you're going to, like you said, you're going to take that, look at the tree preservation plan, and then provide the board with a... with a tree preservation plan.
Absolutely.
Just by, as, as the new rules.
Absolutely.
That's, I just want to make, be clear on that, okay? And then. The last, the last couple of things really is to, like you said, is to talk with the board about the lead agency. And I'll, I'll turn over to the legal counsel to walk us through that before we do that.
Sure.
And also concurrently, if we, if we agree on that, the ZBA. I think you need to do them concurrently and.
Yes.
Move forward. And at the same time, you'll have time to flesh out your drawings and, and get a lot of those done. One of the things that our engineer was concerned about is you don't have an engineer signing the drawings yet. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we move towards the final that we have an engineer.
Not a problem.
And you know that.
Yes.
So I'm telling you what you already know, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same sheet.
Reminders are not a problem.
So that's all. So Jason, you had a couple of comments on the, on the view analysis?
In terms of the view shed analysis, just for consistency. Check in with New York State DEC policy, DEP O O two. So that gives some standards in terms of view shed. So to make sure that on future submissions, that that's considered in whatever that is proposed.
Sure.
We went through the Manny's interpretation of the lot count and we concur with Manny.
Okay.
So we're good with that.
So we could, we feel good with your four thoughts as far as applying?
Thank you.
Okay. Manny, any, any particular additional comments before I turn over to legal to talk about lead agency?
No, no additional comment for me at this time, which the mention they provided, I think is sufficient for us to move forward.
Move forward, okay. Jason, you, you feel comfortable. You were part of the. Mr. McKay, can you talk a little bit about the next steps? Which is obviously circulation or not of the lead agency from, from the village.
Sure. Yeah, sure. But I, I do have, I am curious about Kristen's question. There is a, a question on page ten. It says, is it within two thousand feet of a DEC remediation site? Is that, or is there something different?
So my question was. Not that particular question, but just above. Have hazardous wastes been generated, treated and/or disposed of at the site? Or does the project site adjoin property which is now or was at one time used to commercially treat, store and/or dispose as a hazardous waste? It's checked yes.
Okay. And then you'll see that a little later, further down, it has a DEC number. So obviously, David, do you know if it was on the site or just adjacent to the site?
It was an auto fill.
Okay.
So, you know, we.
Sorry, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, oh, sometimes when you do, when you do the environmental assessment forms, the program auto fills certain questions. It, it automatically fills them and gives a description. So I believe that was one of the auto fills. So when we distribute it to the.
Sorry, David, go ahead. Didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
So, so you do the EAF mapper portion of it? And you'll put in the boundaries of where it is? And the DEC database will fill in, yes, the DEC has an identified site within two thousand feet, two hundred feet. So David says it's basically was auto-generated by the DEC program. So they'll have to.
We'll get comments on it, sure.
We don't even know necessarily if it was on this property or not. It could be adjacent. We'd have to find out.
Well, there is some.
Great question.
Some dirt concerns in that area, right across the road.
Across the road.
Across the, the road.
Toward the DPW?
Yeah. Right across the road.
Okay.
I, I would venture to guess that between the railroad, the DPWR and the wastewater treatment plant that's down in that vicinity, that one of those has, was previously flagged and that's why it's coming up.
Well, a, a major flag there, my understanding, has been over the years. Scenic technologies.
By scenic, okay.
They, they almost sold the property they had down there. It was, it was found, it was discovered. And scenic still owns the property because. It's pretty dirty.
But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any legal objection to this board moving forward to circulate for lead agency.
No, I, I don't either. I just, because there seemed to be some concern about whether there, there was a concern about.
But I think the question is, can we move forward or should we move forward without really knowing if that's an issue or not?
I believe we can move forward. Because they, they have to research that. We still, they have to provide more detailed plans, et cetera, and which they're going to do. Come back from the ZBA, all those other things. But we're, what we're looking at today is.
Lead it.
Can we circulate this to get us in thirty days the right to be the lead agency?
Right.
That's what we want to, that's the decision today.
That's it. And I did prepare a resolution if the, for the board's consideration that would authorize us to circulate for lead agency.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to authorize circular, cir, circular?
To.
Okay, to circulate. For a, for a lead agency.
I'll motion it.
All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. We're going to circulate for lead agency. Manny, you got that? And I'll try to say it better next time.
All right.
Can I?
Anything else tonight?
Just one, just one course of action. We'd like to get to the zoning board.
You want us to refer?
Yes.
Yes. How do we do that formally?
Can we do it before we're lead agency?
Well, I don't know why you, I, I don't know why you would want to. Because one of the. Things that we had discussed or at least had come up for discussion was, you know, the, you know, the lot count and how, so now you're at sixteen point seven and you, you're looking.
You have to.
There were some side lot. The lots are too small, right? So you need the, the lot size variances.
Actually, our lot sizes are in compliant with the zoning code. It's our lot width at the road frontage.
Lot width, okay.
I thought we, we thought they could overlap. The ZBA requirements. We could refer them.
Well, let, let's discuss, discuss it. So, so the question is, you know, whether or not it's too early to refer to the ZBA. And the only question is whether or not you're going to perform coordinated review so that this board is the only board that issues a negative declaration presumably for the project? Or whether this board issues its own negative declaration and the ZBA, when it gets their application, issues a negative declaration? The point being, if this board held off on revering, referring to the ZBA until it got to the point where it issued a negative declaration, there might be site changes. You might request a change in the roadway or where it is or whatever change may occur as you go through the process. And I think what the board should at least consider is. What the impact might be is if you referred it to the ZBA early on in the process, they got the road width variances and then came back and it would essentially be a requirement that this board would have to follow even though it hadn't completed SEACRE yet. In other words, I, I would think this board would want to spend some more time with the application.
Sure.
Fine tuning it before it referred it to the ZBA. And this way, this board determines as lead agency presumably no one else, no one else is going to take lead agency status here. It's just, but it's, it's pro forma. We, we have to do it. But I think the board should at least consider the fact that once you become lead agency, whether you want to control the SEACRE process and issue one presumably negative declaration that would bind the ZBA or you, whether you want the ZBA to do some separate uncoordinated review. To me, it seems a little early in the process to refer it to the ZBA. But that's for the board to discuss.
How's the board feel about it? Those are good thoughts and I'm glad you shared it with us. Yeah, I think. Feel comfortable with our legal counsel?
Yeah. That's why we have them, right?
That's why we have them.
I've known Joe for a while, so, yeah. Yeah, I, I appreciate the thoughts.
You're allowed to disagree with me, David. It's, it's okay. You can disagree.
I would offer a different opinion on that. It, it's going to become redundant to refine the plans even, even more than they are right now without direction from the zoning board. I would love to believe the fact that we would get a zoning board decision in one meeting. That probably may not happen since they would have to have a public hearing. So there is time that would lapse for us to refine the plans, to make the, we could even come back to the planning board while we're, before the zoning board. But it's really imperative at this point to know how many lots we're dealing with, what their thoughts are regarding the lot frontage requirements. And we would proceed at our own risk, you know, if something were to come along that would interrupt that, which I really don't see. It's not a use variance. These are all area variances. I don't, I cannot see how any outside agency would. Care, quite honestly, you know, what? If, if it was a sixteen or seventeen lot subdivision, if the road frontages were a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty feet. So we would, I would ask the board to please consider referring us to the zoning board. Please allow us to continue on with the process.
Hey, David, last time you were here, there was a slight discrepancy between your calculations with the lots and Jason's office. Was that resolved? I'm not sure if, like, if I missed that. I guess it was like how you did the calculation versus how they did the calculation?
That, that was the lot count. That was resolved.
It's resolved.
So it's resolved.
It's resolved.
See, the, the key, if I may, is that they have to go for some variances. If they don't approve those variants, it might impact their number of units. And that's what he was mentioning, not the calculations, okay?
Just wanted to make sure that.
No, that's a great question. Great question. Gary. Thoughts, Mr. McKay? Or?
Well, we don't, you don't anticipate that there would be any kind of changes that would create the need for any future variances that.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Now that you've heard. Of the thought, how do you feel? Who are your thoughts?
I mean, we're not even the lead agency yet, David, you know, so we know that that, that will happen. We, we understand that. I'm not, I, I just, I'm not looking to delay your, your client at all, but it's, it's kind of early in the process, you know? I don't know, I don't know how many meetings this process may take. You know, I'm sure that there's other information you're still going to need to get to Jason. This board's going to review it and might meet once or twice before there's a, a public hearing. I, I just think we should leave open, at least at this very early stage, the question of whether this board wants to conduct coordinated review, have some more environmental information, go through the view shed analysis, et cetera, et cetera, before another board is involved in the SEACRE review of the same project. I can't, I can't cite a case. I can't pinpoint a, a, you know, a, a, a sentence in a treatise. But that's, that's my. That, that's how I think best to proceed at this time.
I can appreciate the thought.
I don't think so.
All right, well. I'm not appreciating your thoughts. Nothing's really going to change. I mean, even if you wait the month, what will change on these plans? We, we can't further the environmental aspect of it without getting comments back from the DEC. We, I mean, the view shed analysis, Jason is, is correct. I mean, we will refer back to the DEC, you know, for their regs on it. But still, we satisfy preliminarily the view shed analysis according to the Cornwall zoning code for visual impact on, on the site. So there's really nothing that we're going to further in the design within the next thirty days to come back to the planning board that will impact the project. I, the, the big impacts right now are ju, are the, are the variances.
So as the. I don't mean to debate this with you, David, but to discuss it, right? So you don't anticipate as this board goes through the process, there could be changes in the, the way the roads configured or with the way the homes are laid out and how that may affect the drainage and other things? You know, that all goes into ultimately what this board's going to determine, which is whether or not to issue a negative declaration. I would think something, I mean, I've.
But those design, those design elements are going to come after, after the fact. They'll come after the zoning board decisions, after we get comments back from the two thirty-nine referrals. We, we're not going to be able to further design, further the design of the project without. The, the input of all these other agencies. So I agree with you. At one point, the storm water will be completed. The water, domestic water will be, design will be completed, the sanitary sewer. But that's probably four to five months from now.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's early on in the process to refer it.
From what I'm hearing, but I, I have to refer to the board. Any, Gary, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just follow Mr. McKay's lead.
No, I, I, that's why my concern is quiet, silent even. I cast no. The vote you've already taken.
On which thing? On the lead agency?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think there's an issue on lead agency. The issue is referral to the ZBA. Does that make sense? So what we're, what Mr. McKay is suggesting, let's, let's do a lead agency and hold off on the ZBA. That's his recommendation, right?
I can, I can.
And you support that? How do you feel?
I will defer to our.
Defer to our attorney. I sort of like. Well, David, I. We're going to have to stand by on the ZBA right now. And we've already put a vote forward to circulate, so we'll, we'll circulate.
It's most unfortunate, really, I have to say, because it's really hindering the process of the project. It's really hindering the design. Because right now, I mean, quite honestly, we're not going to be able to come back. Nothing's going to change. Why change anything until we get the comments back from the DEC or from the Army Corps or whatever other outside agencies have, are, will have an impact on this? So.
And I don't have, I just want to go through process a little bit. So.
Sure.
There's not going to be any comments from the DEC. DOH or anybody at this point. All we're doing is circulating for lead agency. So I don't think that we're holding up any comments from them because we're, the DEC or the DOH or any other agency is not going to even put this application on their pile to review as outside agencies until you have a preliminary approval. That's, so that's neither here nor there of the, of the ZBA referral. I just want to make that clear. I just want to make that clear, that this board has a ways to go to reach a preliminary approval. That will include the ZBA analysis, but it's not going to be, those agencies are not going to review the project at this time.
I'm going to have to defer.
I think that further confirms it, I guess.
Do we need to make a motion?
The one thing, the one thing that I could see doing, David, is if we come back, and this board is lead agency, and they decide to conduct coordinated review, we could send you to the ZBA. The ZBA could process the application, hold the hearing. They wouldn't be able to take final action, but they could do that.
Correct. Oh, no, I agree. They won't, they would just render a decision, or preliminary decision, but they can't act.
But if you went there now, they would be their own lead agency for the seeker review. In other words, I think we have to wait until this board is the agency. They determine whether it's coordinated or uncoordinated, and regardless of how that, you know, if they decide it's coordinated, we can send you to the ZBA. You can have your application, have your public hearing. They wouldn't be able to make a final decision, but you'd be several months further down the road.
Correct.
That's what I got.
Anything else, David?
He woke up on the wrong side of the bed. Come on, it wasn't fair.
It's all the knotweed I have in my yard.
You know, I was asked the question, so I'd like to put it up to the board so we could just, because it's floating around. So it was observed that the planning board has the authority to waive parking requirements. I was asked to ask the board, does the, does a planning board have the authority to waive the variances that we would be required by the zoning board?
I will, I will.
And that's why we have a ZBA, I mean, we're not going to their business.
Yeah.
This board can waive site plan requirements, but the zoning requirements can only be written by the ZBA.
I, thank you for entertaining the question, I appreciate it.
Such as that we discuss the road line. Like, that is something that this board.
Yeah. No, I agree, I understand.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Is there anything specific you want them to come back with?
Our third and last discussion is on the pre-application meeting for Storm King School, Dire Hall, and I believe we have.
I don't know.
Lisa Shambaugh. It's going to, it's going to, the head of school is going to open up.
All right, well, good evening. I'm Lisa Shambaugh, and I'm the head of school at the Storm King School. And I am relatively new to Storm King. I just came last summer, and, but this project that we'll be discussing tonight is one that's been under discussion by the school for some years, around at least 10 years. This is a renovation and an expansion of an existing academic building, which is going to provide our students with modern classrooms, you know, based, and a really much-needed renovation of a really important learning space for them. Storm King currently has 175 students. Our students are 70% boarding students and 30% day, so we've got a really vibrant, thriving community of high school-age students on campus. And so what I'm going to do is have John Fuller present the details of the project, and Jamie Smith, our director of facilities, is here as well, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board. Again, my name is John Fuller. I'm a professional engineer that's been working with Storm King on the design of this project. Just kind of giving you a little more of a design engineering perspective. They have a current building, classroom building, which is called Dire Hall. It's about 3,000 square feet and contains five classrooms, which are quite small to what we will call modern standards. They're just over 300 square feet each. So they have about this 3,000 square foot building, and what they're looking to do, as Lisa has alluded to, is to not only modernize that particular building, but also to enlarge it, as it's one of their focal points, their classroom instructions, among other things, stem in some of the more modern classroom settings. So the building, currently, they have a small trailer, which is also serving as a classroom-type facility behind the Dire Hall, and I've kind of highlighted it on our site plan. And the addition will add an additional 7,500 square feet, so they're taking what is currently a 3,000 square foot building and adding 7,500 square feet to it, which will have an additional eight classrooms. So within this current Dire Hall, there's five classrooms, which they'll renovate into two spaces, and then add an additional eight for a total of 10 classrooms. So with that, we also proposed in the site plan an additional parking lot, and I think Jamie can speak a little bit to the parking needs, but there is certainly a need at the, at the campus for additional parking at certain times of the year. And so we've delineated a space of about an additional 40 parking spots with some current newer amenities like EV for charging stations. But it's a pretty straightforward, it's in the center of campus, probably the total area disturbance is just over about an acre of land on the 25-acre parcel. And we wanted to come before you in a pre-application setting to begin preparations for our formal application, answer any questions that you have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm open up to the board to ask questions?
Can I walk up and see where the building is?
So this is the current Dire Hall right here.
So where's, I'm not oriented. Okay, so this is 9W.
Yeah, so here's 9W. You come up Mountain Road from 9W here into the center of campus. There's two primary driveways going in. This first driveway brings you in past the theater hall to the admin building and some other administration buildings here. And so this is right in the center of campus. This is the multipurpose, which is also that serves as the dining facility here. So it's this building right here.
And the addition, this is like, almost like you're building a new building that's connected?
That's connected, essentially, yeah. Yeah, we're calling, I mean, we're calling it addition, but essentially it'd be a new building that's connected through an enclosure, yeah, into the old Dire Hall.
And what's here right now?
Currently, just behind the existing Dire Hall is a, is a, it was a temporary trailer, but it's been somewhat permanent. And then there's an observatory in that area as well that we'll be removing, yeah.
And then what about a 10 or 12-foot spot, a parking lot?
Yeah, there is, there is an existing parking lot in the general vicinity of the proposed addition, which is about 12 spaces. But that would be the, we'd build the building there, and then behind that would be a 40-space parking lot.
Okay. Any other questions? Gary? Lee? No. No? Okay, just a couple of things. I mean, this is, this is your preliminary, and this is kind of, these are the sorts of things we're going to look at in the future. So as you've heard from other applicants that have come in, especially, for example, the development, we'll be looking for, the next time you come in, when you have your application, your civil drawings, a little bit more definition on the, for the site that we could take a look at, for the underground, all those sorts of things. We'll be looking for a zero impact on the sewage and storm water, especially storm water. You know, I don't know how, is it septic there?
No, they have a.
It's a town?
They have a sewer system that, no.
Sewer system just for the campus?
Yeah, they have a campus sewer system that was approved by this board about 10 years ago, Jamie.
Okay, Jamie.
Yeah, we have a septic plant, and the heart of the entire campus actually flows down into the plant, gets treated, and then goes out as effluent, has very clean water.
Okay.
Looks cleaner than the drinking water from Cornwall, but as they proved in jars.
You got, you got Mike sitting right here.
Mike is good again, too. Tell him, Mike. Tell him, Mike.
They tell me you can drink it, I'm like, you first, I'm not going to. But anyway, there's no.
Put that down as a.
When we came 10 years ago to do this full plan of all this coming in the future.
Sure.
We designed the plant to accommodate.
To accommodate its expansion?
Yeah.
Because I, you're going to put more latrines in, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay.
Student body at this time would not grow, but maybe five or 10 students, so just accommodating what we already have and just making it better and a little more spacious.
Okay. And then, then, John, as far as the stormwater runoff, et cetera, you know, we'd like to see zero impact, so.
Sure.
However you work it out, you've got some things you're working there, those sorts of things.
You had a question, Jamie?
Just the facilities that are, that are existing, the observatory and the trailer, are those going to be relocated, or?
They're being removed, yeah. They'll be removed.
On fire, on that trailer, I can't wait. No kidding.
Yeah, the sewer treatment is down here along 9W. And again, this, that's a project that was approved by this board about a decade ago. They have way more capacity than they're currently using, and as Jamie indicated, you know, the expansion that they're doing now isn't necessarily going to increase their student body as much as provide the necessary convenience of modern classrooms. I mean, I think they're hoping to grow a certain amount of population, but that's not what's really driving this particular project.
Right. Lisa, did you have anything?
No, I was just going to affirm that, that the, this isn't a project to grow our enrollment.
This isn't growth, this is really sustain what you have.
Right, this is to accommodate our current student body. The largest enrollment Storm King's ever had was 195. We're at 175 right now, and so the campus can accommodate that many, although from what I understand, they were bursting at the seams. So this is really just to, you know, within the band of enrollment we've seen to better, better suit our academic program.
Okay. And you know, as we, as you move forward, you know, we're going to be looking for, we have to decide on lead agency, so we'll be looking for the same things we've talked about already, you know, as far as the completeness of what you have, and as far as drawings, et cetera, because these are obviously, a lot of them are conceptual that you have, and finalize some of those so we could make some.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Those would be very detailed.
Jason, any comments as far as what you would expect?
Just as you discussed, though, you know, if it's over an acre, there'll be a full swift that's required, and just the copies of the speedies permit for the discharge, and whatever report was used as the basis, the design for that should be submitted for the record, too. And of course, that will all be noted in the EAF. I think you should prepare a full EAF for this as well, too.
Mr. Carmona?
Just to make sure, take a look at the planning application that I gave you, have all that information that was mentioned here today, specifically for your next presentation, when you get ready to go for a formal presentation, will be page four and five, that all those items are included on the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKay?
No, I don't have any legal questions at this point, no.
Okay. I don't know if this impacts a lot of trees, et cetera, but if you, you know, if it does, et cetera, can you, I need to have a, some sort of tree preservation.
Certainly, the addition does not. There may be a few in the area that we're proposing the parking lot, but we can, we can get, we can get a count of the actual physical trees, but.
There is, there is a code, a new law, so just make sure, take a look at it, okay? It's in the code. Any other guidance? I know you're excited for this project. We want to assist you through the process as you go through this, and if I don't hear any other questions, et cetera, thank you very much.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Yep, we'll make a formal application.
Thank you, good presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to you coming back. When do you think you'll come back? When do you think you could?
I think you have a meeting, we won't be here in April, but we're going to, we're going to work diligently to be here in May.
Okay, and work with Mr. Carmona as far as coming to the planning board. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, the last topic for tonight. Not a lot of folks left in here, but I wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail, and just make sure everybody's tracking what it is, and why it is with the lead agency with somebody else besides the planning board, and I thought that was important for everybody to know. The Village of Cornwall on Hudson has declared its intent to serve as a lead agency, they provided this to us, for the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail. This project, a New York Forward application award proposed by the village to construct 2,500 linear feet trail, foot trail, will allow for a safe pedestrian connection between Donahue Farm and Donahue Park. It also includes some repair. I wanted to ask Mr. McKay if he'd just talk a little bit about why the, the village's lead agency versus, say, the planning board? And it's really more for information for everybody.
Sure. So this board has jurisdiction over site plan review and subdivision review. This project is neither one of those things. This is part of the village's New York Forward project, and under secret parlance, the village board is the one that is the agency that would have the ability to undertake, fund, or approve this project. So they would be the lead agency, doesn't really fall within our jurisdiction. So it's, it's a village project, they're going to be the lead agency on this. That's the simple answer.
Jason, you want to mention anything else?
I just, if anybody had any questions, we, our office had assisted with some of the preparations on the New York Forward grant, so we happened to have the map of the trail, and it just brought it in, you know, in case there were any questions, so.
Now, I, question for you, education for me. We were provided this by the village as one of the possible folks that would want to be lead agency, but it was for information only. We don't have to respond to this, or do we? Because they're declaring, like, we're declaring to Orange County, and they usually come back and say, no, you got it. Do we owe the village anything?
There are, you don't have to respond. If you don't respond beyond the 30 days.
It's automatic in 30 days.
Yeah, correct.
Bottom line.
Correct. And this board, again, this board wouldn't issue any kind of a permit or approval that would give it the authority to actually step in to request lead agency status.
Okay. I just thought it was good for us to discuss it. It's a project in the village, you know, we should, we should know about it as the planning board, and why the village is lead.
What does it actually look like? Is it a little, like, Macau lane?
Any closing comments from the board? Ah, Mike!
I would just like the record to show that our water system is a New York State award-winning water system.
I knew that was coming.
I drink water.
Mike, did you have to wait until they left? Thank you very much. I enjoy my water.
Yes.
And I appreciate it. Oh, any other comments, et cetera, before we?
No, no.
I want to thank the board and the consultants for tonight. We had a lot of work to do tonight. It's almost nine o'clock, we did our two hours, but I think we got a lot of good work done. This, this large project we have coming, I know, I misspoke, actually, because I know that I should have said, I didn't mean concurrent, you have to get lead agency first, and then you could kind of go concurrent, is what you basically offered. Once we're lead agency, then we could defer.
Well, what I, what I was, it's actually coordinated review versus uncoordinated review. And I know David's not here, if he was here, I would say it again. I think it's just very early on in the process, because really, what you, what you're doing is you're sending a matter to the ZBA. They would be making their own environmental review.
And we haven't even got a lead agency.
Of course, in actuality, it would be limited to the lot width.
No, I think you're, it was good counsel, and I appreciate it.
I can't imagine that there's not going to be any changes, or we might not move the road, and one house would be turned, and a lot, I mean, it just seems so early in the process.
Yeah, because that would delay them further.
It's, I don't think, this is a big project.
This is, this is one of the largest projects this town's had in 30, 40 years, so we want to make sure it's right.
Geez, I've been here 15. I've been here 15 already.
Yeah.
I had beautiful brown hair when I got here. You shouldn't, remember that? Don't you remember?
I used to be able to say, I had hair. I literally got hair.
When something happened.
Beautiful. You should have seen it. But, so.
But, so this is the largest project this village has had, maybe in thirty, forty years.
No.
And.
Nope, that was good counsel, and I appreciate it.
Slow down. You have your job to do, it's tough to say no, but every once in a while, you just say no. It'll be bad.
Okay. Okay, the next plan.
We're gonna have to adjourn the project.
The next planning board is on the fifteenth of April, it's coming up real quick, I'm not sure who's gonna be teed up, because I'm not sure how fast anybody could come back with anything, at, at seven o'clock. I'd like to have the board, if they could, come fifteen minutes early from now on, before we start a session, so we could just kinda sink ourselves, if we could. And then, if I have no further questions, it is almost nine o'clock, and I appreciate all your time. I have a, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
I second this.
Second. Full in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. How are you? Good to see you.
Of course. I might've written on it.
Oh, jeez. You know, in, in the army.